You're watching CHCO TV's Gavel to Gavel Coverage of the October 11th, 2023 Committee of the Hole Meeting for the Municipal District of St. Stephen. I'm Vicky Hogars.
And I'm Florence Mitchell. In today's meeting, committee will discuss an incentive package to entice a junior A hockey team to move to the Garcelin Civic Center. A potential owner of a team is looking for an updated agreement from the municipal district to restore upper-level hockey in the community.
Next, committee will discuss a new approach to the municipal budget plan for 2024 by inviting members of the public into the planning conversation to get their feedback. While the timeline is short, community involvement could be valuable.
Now, let's join committee in the Moosehead Room at the Garcelin Civic Center.
Welcome to the Municipal District of St. Stephen, Committee of the Hole Meeting, Wednesday, October 11th, 2023, at 6:00 PM. And everyone's here but Council Harding.
She did send her regrets.
And she sent her regrets, yes. Okay, next up, before we begin, I would like to respectfully acknowledge that the land we are gathered today on the ancestral unceded territory of the Pastunumicari people. And next up, a mover and seconder to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Council Eastman.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Wheaton, that the agenda for the Committee Meeting of Hole Meeting of October 11th, 2023 be approved. Any questions on that? All those in favor?
None.
Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Any conflicts of interest this evening? Seeing none. All right, mover and seconder for adoption of the minutes?
So moved.
Council Heisler?
Well, so moved.
Council Cornish, that the minutes of the Committee of the Hole Meeting held on September 13th, 2023 be approved as presented. Any questions on that? All those in favor?
None.
Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Okay, public delegations, none. Strategic initiative update, none. New business. Okay, the junior A hockey incentive package. And so, do we got to move into that? Or just, this committee hall, we just start rolling here? That's right. Okay, so let's talk about that junior A incentive package. Yeah, if you're ready to roll, or I can wing it. Whatever you want. Go for it. Jeff?
Thank you, your worship. This has been brought back for further direction from committee with respect to the incentive package that is, that has been a standing offer for the hopeful return of junior A hockey to the Garcelin Civic Center. Members of the committee will recall that sitting as council, we approved this incentive package to be offered to a potential owner that was looking to relocate a team to our region. That offer was sent out, it had certain conditions in it, one of which was that they had to provide evidence from the league, from Maritime Hockey League, that a team had been awarded and was approved for relocation to our facility. And it had a drop dead date in it to make sure we had that. That date came and went, unfortunately, without the condition being met, which caused the facility user agreement that we had signed to become null and void. So the same individual is still plying his trade and working diligently to see the return of junior A hockey to our facility, has asked for a new agreement. He's got some new irons in the fire, and from what I gather, and is looking for us to reconfirm that this package would be available. No significant administrative concerns should the direction be given to reoffer with new, I would suggest that the same style of conditions be incorporated with the new deadline date for confirmation from the league and items such as that. We don't, what we don't want is to sign an agreement that essentially ends up being an exclusive deal and miss another opportunity that may, that may show up. So one thing that wasn't in the old agreement that I would like to work in as well is a scenario like that where this is out there and signed and it's still in the window with someone who does have the proverbial bird in the hand, ready to go, that we can quickly get rid of, get out of that agreement to get into another one. So if it's the direction of committee, we can work on drafting that document up, advise the interested party that, yes, we're willing to enter into a new agreement. Council, sitting as council, would still have to sign off on the agreement, but I can do the drafting and the negotiating side between now and next council, and hopefully have it all ready for when you sit as council for final adoption, so. But because the expiry date had come and gone, I was outside of my power to say yes or no to the individual, so I was looking for, for direction.
Putting another date in place? Any suggestions on a date that's good for, to protect both sides, I guess?
Yes, your worship, what, what we'll try to do is we'll work with the individual and try to set, see, set a reasonable timeline, given what he knows about the inquiries he's been making, where those, where his discussions stand with both team officials that he's working with, as well as the MHL, and they're, because they have to, they sit a certain number of times a year at certain times, so we'll try to, that'll be a term of negotiation to get that date tuned in, to make it reasonable for both sides. But I think we can move that date out a little bit further for him if we work in the clause about another option coming in and having the get out, the get out clause in that event, right? So we can push that date out a little further and take a little more risk there if we have the out clause, should another, another team be looking for a new home and come knocking on our door with everything already lined up. So I think, I think that can be, I don't think that'll be a sticking point of negotiation, it'll just be a, you know, we'll go back and forth with a few dates as we draft the document.
Okay. So you're gonna, so you want just a direction from council to say, you know, we understand and agree with these terms as they are with the addition of a date and some out clause? That discussions you'll have with the?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just looking for direction that this is still something that, that committee would ultimately recommend to council. We gotta be careful of our wording because of what we're saying this committee, so that I can proceed with the background work. Council will ultimately see the full terms of the agreement and decide whether those terms are acceptable or not. I just don't, if there is no interest in proceeding, I didn't want to waste staff time to, on the negotiations and drafting.
Is there, start on the side? Yeah, Council Eastman?
Yeah, have we ever done a business analysis detailed to the point for what we actually earn off this thing, vice what we spend on it?
Through your worship, yeah, we have, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but we have, when the Aces were here, it was pretty much an annual review, because their contract with us was annually based, where Mr. Sumner's team would look at canteen sales, liquor sales, those types of things, the ice time fee rentals, because they were not getting ice time for free at the time, and look at the math behind it. It was a, it was a significant net positive for our community services department and the Garcelin Civic Center, as far as a revenue generator.
I just, just want to, I just want to add to that, though, there's also the indirect revenue that comes to our community for that as well, that's why we do it. It's the movement of people and large amount of people in our community and supporting all our businesses. That's the other value that we consider. Okay, Council Rotus?
Yeah, at that time, when the Aces were here, we didn't have a senior men's league at the same time, so I'm just thinking about that too, like, does that impact that league in any way? Is it more of a juggle? Would it be that the Aces always get priority and that team could also play? Because I know that that's become kind of a staple of the community as well, so just wondering about that, because at the time, we didn't have to balance those two teams, correct? But now we somewhat do. So that's just a general question, essentially about how we would go about doing that, or if that's been a part of the discussion?
I don't know, Jeff, do you have any, your team want to add to that as far as scheduling? But you're correct, though, we didn't have that senior league. I mean, it makes it a little more juggling going on, but you gotta, the senior league's only playing about 10 games a year, so that, and, and what's that? Oh, there you go, so it was even less. So anyway, anyway, but I wouldn't mind hearing from the staff too, on their perspective of it.
Thank you, your worship. The, when, before we had, before we brought the first discussion of this issue coming, it came up, we did, we did have a chat with Mr. Sumner and Ms. Vest about the scheduling side of things. Yes, our ice time would get cramped, then some of the nice things is that historically, the junior A team takes less desirable ice times, because, you know, they take the ones during the day for practice and things like that. So we actually end up filling some gaps in the schedule. It will be challenging, there's no doubt, our, we have one ice sheet and we have a popular facility, and, which is a good problem to have. That being said, when we talked last, it was determined that it can be do, it's doable, it's just, it takes some work on our staff and, and there'll be some gives and takes with things like public skating and tots with sticks and things like that, but, you know, that's, that's part of hosting a junior A level team, is there will be some challenges along the way.
Counselor Cornish?
Primarily, there's, is there three categories? Basically, the Level B, the Senior League, you might call it, and the high school? Is that pretty well the primary sources of the ice usage?
Oh, okay, well, I could sit or I could stand, it doesn't matter. I want to double back just very briefly, if I could, about the comment about a senior team at the same time as a junior A team, that's not exactly accurate. We used to have the Seahawks here as well, at the same time, we had the Aces. In my tenure here at the Garcelin Civic Center, I have worked both, so I can tell you the attendance is there for, for both games. The 2026 season was the last time of the overlap, that is correct, there was only a few years of overlap between the Aces and the Seahawks, but absolutely, I do believe that it could support, it absolutely is completely doable, we've done it before. With the users, yes, currently minor hockey is our major user, they average 19 or 20 hours per week, the high school, boys and girls, average probably about eight hours a week. The Irishmen take one hour of practice time, and then they actually, it's eight, it's eight games, not seven this season, but, and they're only on Saturday nights. A junior A team would tend to be about 26 home games in a season, and they can play them afternoons, evenings, whenever. Obviously, nighttime slots are the best for us, but currently, we have nothing on Friday nights after minor hockey's ice times at 7:00, which would fit really nicely for us with a junior A game. So could this facility support it? Yes, because we have in the past. And that was, again, in the past with the two high school teams and with the senior league, so I do believe we can. Canteen sales, I believe I heard that a bit earlier, there are historical records that can be shared through the CAO's office if required, as well to show that the benefits, it does come directly to the facility, as well as, as the mayor was stating about how it benefits everyone around us, I'm sure Pizza Delight and the Five Kings and then it would be Game Time could tell you how they love game days. So, any other ice use questions?
Okay, any further questions of council?
No, it's great, thank you.
So I guess my question to council, everyone comfortable with Jeff moving forward and negotiating? Right on, okay. Thank you, everyone. Okay, next up is the 2024 municipal budget public consultation plan. Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you, worship. This is brought to committee because, quite frankly, at least during my tenure here, this would be a new approach for municipal budget presentation, preparations. I've been talking to senior staff for, for years about the need to open the doors to the public and get some feedback from, from the public regarding budget preparation. Part of the issue is that the budget timelines in the province of New Brunswick for municipal budgeting are very tight. By the time assessments come out, equalization grants come out, where we know where the basic numbers are, you know, we just got those within the last week, within the last few days, where we got all the material that we need, and we're looking at a November 15th legislative deadline to get an approved budget to the government. So our window's very small, as opposed to other jurisdictions in Canada where our budget wouldn't be due until April of next year. So we've been trying to figure out a way to do this. In an effort to take the first step towards a more robust public consultation of a budget, what I was, the concept I was playing with was an informal session held here at the GCC in the evening, facilitated by myself and my team, to go through a budget presentation with the 2023 budget looks like, what some of the service levels look like, and then include a budget exercise where priorities and preferences for where taxpayer dollars should be spent, that opportunity is given to the public to weigh in in that way during the session. Cognizant of the fact that not everybody will make the date or the time or be interested in doing that, concurrently, looking at preparing a survey similar to the one that's been given to you in your package as a sample, to gauge people's feedback on some of our services and our priorities, and formulate that into ultimately a what we heard document, that would be fed into not only the administrative work on the budgeting, but presented to you alongside the draft budget, as we, as we entered into discussions with you about the budgeting priorities, so you can see what the citizens have set our priorities versus what we have presented to you as, as the ongoing operational budget. I think, will it be perfect on the first year we try this? No. We'll, we'll fall down and, and I expect that to happen. I do think if it's conducted in a respectful and meaningful way, where, one of the things that, in the past, that I've done in things like this is where we record comments, and we record comments, you know, doesn't matter what your name is or where you're from, but let's get it on the whiteboard or get it on the, in the computer. And then when we do the what we heard document, yeah, we'll summarize a bunch of the data and show you pie graphs and all that stuff, but at the back, what I like to do is add an appendix of what we heard, and it's literally a transcript of the comments that came in, and a column beside it saying how we, how we address those comments, or if we address those comments. Sometimes we don't, because we can't, but if we say, oh, we believe this comment was dealt with in the community services section under this heading, because we're going to do this program, right? It provides a feedback loop to the public that they were heard, they were considered, it may not be in the 20, this particular budget may be held over, but it creates that feedback loop that it was not just a show of a consult, it was, we heard you, this is how we understood it, and this is, this is how we either addressed it, or we plan to address in the future, or we can't, it's, you know, it's not our jurisdiction or whatever, but it closes the loop and makes the next round that much better, because you've, you know, we've been upfront and said about what we did and what we heard and what we, how we understood it, how we addressed it. So it's a little, I mean, it's a little nerve-wracking to even suggest it, because it, we don't, you never know what you're going to get at these meetings, especially the first one. That being said, I think it's worth an effort to try, and we'll learn from it, we'll grow from it, we'll get better at it. And I've already been looking at some technology that can help with these types of conversations specifically related to budget stuff that could be deployed in future years, but I would like, I guess I'm looking for your blessing to, to try something new, and report back on how it goes, and, and see how, how we can help address the priorities of our community.
So, yes, I'll just speak for a little bit there, if there's some council I want to speak after. So what I do like about this is, it's not, when you say, we will learn, it's not just we around the table, we as a community will learn. You know, give everyone a chance or perspective of what it takes to run a municipality, it'll take, you know, because we all have these wants, you know, we all want every sidewalk or street done every year, or all these things, but then we can put a value to that too and say, okay, if you want that, this is what, this rate will be to have that, I think we could get into that, and, but then, and plus get a good measurement of what people do want us to invest in, you know, they may all, you know, if they want it, then that's our opportunity to say, okay, this is, you know, they may want to pay higher taxes to get more things, if that's the feedback we get, you never know, right? But anyway, I think it's a good opportunity for all of us, but, yeah. Is there any comments from council? Council Greenlaw?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, having the transparency and actually get the feedback and engage the community, like you said, educate the community. They saw the budget, then they might understand a little more where their money's going. One thing to keep in mind, like, I would look at it as only this much money is not earmarked for something already. Like, so, you know, when, when the expectations, when they come in, it would be, okay, our budget's 12 million, and really, all you have is this much, that you can, that's not already spent. The rest of it is already spent on, on essential services and so on and so forth, so that's kind of maybe how I'd frame it, but, yeah.
It's a response, it's something that, it's a good point, it's something that I've been kind of trying to wrap my head around, because that is one approach. Another approach would be, or, my concern would be that our natural inclination, and by our, I mean, administrative staff, honestly, would be to protect some budget that maybe it doesn't need to be protected. And by, by not setting that boundary and letting the citizens come up and say, we think you should spend less on whatever in order to get more over here, it will be a feedback loop for you and for us of where we might be, you know, we might not be able to meet, you know, they say, well, cut this in half and give it all over here, we might not be able to go to half, but maybe in the first year, if we look at some innovative things, whatever, we can get 5%, 10%. It challenges us to try to find a way to meet these expectations, if we can, or at least question ourselves, what are we protecting? Because anybody who's followed any level of government knows that once you start doing something, you never stop doing it, even if it's not the most efficient way. So I, I hear you about, you know, there are certain things that we are legally committed to do, there are legal, you know, we have a union and we have certain things that are almost locked in, but if we can limit that presentation, that part of our presentation to the public who may challenge us to innovate and challenge us to question how we do things and why we do them, I think there might be value there. So I think there's a, there's a, there's a seesaw that we need to balance between those two options.
Counselor Rotus?
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. What I like about this is it's nice, it gives us an opportunity to see if our strategic vision aligns with the community, and therefore, if, maybe if we need to make some changes on what our priorities that we developed are, we could look at that. The other thing is, I'm wondering if, would it offer an opportunity for citizens to ask questions about, I get this question a lot, like, how it is decided which roads we pave, for instance? Like, that's a general question I get often when it comes to infrastructure, is, you know, how do you decide on those roads? And that's a challenging thing, because somebody might tick off infrastructure thinking, I want my road done, and that's top priority, but also, like, that information sharing of this is actually how we choose which roads are going to be done. So will it offer an opportunity for a little bit of Q and A room that way?
Through your worship, yeah. The intention is that the first half of the conversation will be an educational component, and the second half of the, of the evening, our events coordinator and I have been, have been working on a fun and interactive way to work with, work with the budget feedback. And so, yeah, the first half will be, you know, it'll be lecture, Q and A style to set, we want people to have a foundation of knowledge, right? We want, we want whatever we do with the, we'll call it the gameplay side of it, to have some validity, and to do that, we have to make sure everybody has at least a basic understanding. So we'll take time to review how we do things, but the other part of that is, you know, I think XYZ street should be done, that's where that comment board comes in, where we said, you know, someone says, I think Elm Street needs to be done in 2024, it can't wait another year, you know, there might be 40 people that all say that, or it may be one off, but we still capture that, and so that when we are doing our normal process of looking at our capital plan, it's in front of you, that says, this is, this was brought up during our deliberate, or our consultation stuff, you know, it's worth noting, and then it'll be up to you folks to make a policy decision that this road has got to be done before that road. And, and for those that are returning, you know, we bring engineers involved and say, this, this one's failing and it won't last, it's not just that it's rough, but there's other, there's other elements that we consider. But we need to capture that feedback from the, from the public and get that to you. And right now, that's, I think that's a key piece of our budgeting process that we're missing, just doing it inside the black box of, of local government and giving it to you, saying, here, trust us, you know, we did the right thing, so.
Counselor Heisler?
Yeah, I think this is a good first stab, because, you know, this will be refined, I imagine, over the years, because really, we've had transparency, but nobody shows up to those budget meetings. I mean, I've been on council for seven years, and how many people have ever showed up to a, to a budget meeting from the public? Nobody, I don't think, I don't think, or one or two, maybe. So I think we have to capture some of those things, and it gets pretty convoluted with the roads and everything, because it's, you know, like you say, if it's failing infrastructure and everything else, but I think this would be a good idea, hopefully we get some, you know, some feedback back, and it might take a while to educate that, I was looking at that question about underfunded or overfunded, and, and that's going to have to be a point probably in the educational part of it to say, you know, what, this is what we fund right now, and, because I get those questions all the time, you know, they, like, well, why don't we just pave all the streets? I say, well, you know, they cost this amount, and this is what our budget is, and they don't look at the budget, but they figure you can pave all the streets, right? So it's, it'll be good for getting, I think, give the public at least a basis of some of the stuff that we do and what we're responsible for, right?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Great points, counselor. I would say that one of the things, you say, you know, you're quite correct, we're transparent, we bring the budget, we post it online, but by the time we bring you the budget normally, in a normal circumstance, in truth, it's essentially done. Whereas, by, with the schedule we're trying to hit with this consultation, there's, it's going to be at the front end of, near the front end of the administrative process, so it hopefully will be at a stage where it will influence some of the conversations that we have around the table, and hopefully the public will see that, that it's not, again, it's not, we're not trying to pay lip service to, we consulted and checked the box and move on, we actually want to see if there are ways that we can work this so that it actually is meaningful dialogue. It will be perfect first year? No, it won't be, we know that, but conversation starts with, you know, saying, hi, hello, let's have a conversation, and I think that's kind of the, where we're at. And hopefully, you know, hopefully when we do present budget to you in our first draft of the budget, we can say, listen, you know, this is what, here's the, what we heard document, here's the budget that goes alongside, look at all the cross connections we did, you know, or, you know, this is, this is what your citizens have told us, this is how we've responded. If we can do that, I think that's the first real good step into creating a trusting dialogue moving forward for, for the MD Council, because this is your, you know, this is your first budget, this is your first process, I want to get you off on the right foot. It was a weird process last year, we all know that, with the minister signing off on your budget, not you. So this is our first opportunity to, to crack open the door and let people in, and I really think it's a good idea to do that.
Yes, go ahead, Counsel Rotus.
I think my favorite part of this is the fact that you put in balancing the budget and mentioned how municipalities are not permitted to run a deficit, and actually asked people, like, do we want to see an increase in taxes or reduction of service? And I like that, because it addresses the reality of what we're working with, I mean, sometimes people forget that part of balancing a budget is making decisions on how things should be prioritized, so I felt like looking at this, it is going above and beyond and saying, okay, tell us what your priorities are, but then tell us how you would like to achieve them. So I just want to thank you for that, because I think that was, that's actually key in all of it. We need to know how people want us to address their concerns, you know, if, if we want an increase in protective services, then what are we going to have to do in order to make that happen? You know, what cuts or reductions in other levels of service? So just thanks for noting that, that's a, that's a tough conversation, but it's nice to have it.
Just with respect to- Just with respect to the survey you have, um, that is a, a sample that, a colleague of mine from Ontario, that's, that they've used. I'm want to, I've got a few other colleagues that are sending me some stuff, um, to, I, I want to build it out a little bit more. They are able to use a little bit more vague terminology and a little more vague questions, um, in their sample because they've been doing this for a long, long time. And their citizens know what some of these questions mean because they've been very active. And it's one of the reasons I, I went to this individual and said, you guys are good at this, you know, show me, show me how to do it and, and in a smaller town, they're bigger than us. But, um, so I want to get a little bit more refinement on the survey before we roll it out. I would, I'm hoping to roll it out in the very near future, so that, again, we're on tight timelines. We'll push it out through Altable and, and it's there and, and we'll push it out through the, through all of our social media and we'll have hard copies here, like, we're going to push it around. But, uh, but yeah, there's some refinement to, to be done there for sure. So, certainly if council has, um, additional questions that you want considered or something that you would be good to ask that you think would be good to be captured, absolutely send me an email, send me, send us a note. Because we're, if, 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 I sense that the direction is that it's worth trying. We'll be working really hard to try and get this out, uh, I mean, I'll, I'll go on the record say by the end of next week, the, the survey portion.
Council Wright?
Thank you, your worship. Um, thank you, Jeff, I think this is a, a great idea, especially where this is our first year as an amalgamated community. I think giving these citizens forum, uh, to come and say, this is what it looks like. I mean, we are still, we have a, still a municipal, uh, as far as a downtown core and we still have some rural wards. And so to set people's minds at ease of, of how it looks in the budget process, I think is great. Whether or not people come, well, that's up to them. If we provide the opportunity, then, then we have done everything we could to do that. I think engagement will grow, um, as it, as we grow this concept out as a council. I really like the idea. Nothing is perfect and nobody is perfect. There's always things that can be refined, but I think it's an amazing first start just to have this conversation. It's never been had before in this kind of format. Coming to a, a council meeting and listening to a dry budget is quite different than having a forum like that. And, uh, thank you for stepping up and doing that and also obviously emceeing it and hosting it and bringing what staff you need. As our council's only employees, as we said before, it's, it's only natural that you would do that for us and then bring the feedback to us. So, you're doing a lot of the heavy lifting and, and I think it's great, I like, I like, I like the looks of it. Just really happy with it and I hope, uh, council, there'd be enough seats for some counselors to sit in and be interested. Not to speak, but just, just to see the tone of things as well, how it goes as far as the tone of the citizens and how they're feeling about things.
Council Cornish?
Uh, Jeff, just a question, I think it's maybe an opportunity also to define the budget. At this time, we have Ward Two budget. Ward One, Ward Three, there's really not much being spent at all from the town and we are now the municipal district. There's still a, the chart you created with the four bars across it was a very helpful, useful tool to let people know where to go for the town and the rest is either government or whatever. But I think one of the drawing cards would be a clarification of next year's budget from what we know now, unless something changes dramatically and we don't know when that'll be. Be clarification of, a lot of people out there saying, are you going to put my taxes up? When are you going to pave my road? When are you going to cut my trees and all that stuff? So, I think building beyond just Ward Two, Ward One and Ward Three should be considered in there to have people come in and say, okay, this is what we're doing for the town as it is. But hopefully, eventually, whatever the words you want to put around it, uh, we will be involving you. And right now, it could be a surprise, you may have to pick another budget up halfway next year or whatever, we have no idea. But it's good to keep them informed because we're still getting a lot of questions, a lot of phone calls, what can you do for me? And generally speaking, it's out of our territory, literally. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, anyway, the survey is a great tool, but, I mean, and I know you guys already do this, but you're the best, your best tool too is to communicate with the citizens as you do. Like, you can talk to a hundred people and, and get that feeling and share your concerns and they'll share their concerns. And anyways, like we've been doing before we had surveys, but, but, yeah. It's just, you gotta, you gotta talk to people because back and forth is, is just as important, it's just one-liners. And, uh, yeah, okay, so, everyone's okay with Jeff fine tuning that one? And, and if he can handle timelines, yeah? Okay, okay. Yeah, okay, all right.
Your dates are kind of fixed.
Um, we're still working, we'll, we'll be forming up dates and times. The, the poster that you, you got in there was Ms. Vest, uh, just trying to give you a sample of what could be, what could be go out. But we have, uh, we're working with, our timeline with the provincial government as far as our deadline to get you guys to approve a budget. And then now with this, we're overlaying the availability of our rooms and stuff upstairs. So, we're going to try and do it as soon as we can with having material, good material ready that we can show. I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, go and, and not have the educational component down. But also with enough time that it, that it can influence budget as best it can. So, it's, there's a proposed, there's a proposed date there that Ms. Vest put in there that we think might work as far as the rooms and my schedule and things, but it, that's subject to change until the, uh, until the official announcement goes out, which of course you guys will all get directly from, probably from Celeste. So, but we'll, we'll definitely keep you in the loop of how we're going, but, uh, we look forward to it. It's going to be an interesting, an interesting evening, I think.
Okay, that ends that discussion. Next up, I need a mover and a seconder to move in to close for a potential land disposition and a financial matter. Council Wright, Council Cornish, any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right. Okay, so, as, I don't know if you heard Jeff, but, uh, after this is, uh, the end of our meeting. So, uh, thank you everyone for, uh, taking part in our meeting this evening. And, uh, we'll see you at our next council meeting, uh, on the last Wednesday of the month. Thank you.